We're gonna start out with public comments. Go ahead, Ty.
So, I want to bring up an issue I had. I've gotten it resolved, but it's something that I feel that it's not just me that has the potential, my family to have the potential of this issue. So, my son graduated sixth grade here in June. He had difficulties, he has intervention, reading intervention during the school year, mostly in classroom. So, before the school, in May, I asked, you know, where's he gonna go? Cause previous years, he's always came here for summer school help and then did the crossroads thing too. So, I started the conversation in May and it wasn't until Tuesday of this week that I got, finally got an answer. But I got in a lot of answers that I wasn't okay with accepting, so I continued. And I think it's a loophole, you know, the kids fall into this. You know, they've graduated Highgate School, they're not seventh graders yet. I wasn't okay with my son not having help, especially after seventh grade registration night saying, you know, talking to the teachers up there saying, you know, yes, continue with the help through the summer like you always have, because if not, he'll regress and then it's such a big step already from sixth to seventh grade. To, if he regresses, then you're playing catch-up for who knows how many months, right? So, he's going to go into U starting Monday. He hasn't missed a whole lot, but it was, it was six weeks of where's he going, is he going anywhere? You know, I talked to her, I talked to the lady in central office, I talked to Janet Hatton, I talked to, you know. My thing is, you know, my situation has been fixed or resolved. I'm advocating for the ones that the parents got the answer, there's no place to go and that's it, right? And I'm sure there's other cases of this where, you know, you get your first answer and you don't know enough resources or to... So, I hope that we can figure something out that it's easier in the future for the child going from sixth grade to seventh grade to get some intervention help in the, in the summer before they step up.
Uh, thank you, Ty. Uh, any announcement from the public?
Alright, can I respond a little bit? So, this, I don't remember the exact details, but this, this came up a couple of years ago with where does a rising sixth grader go to for that support before the middle school? Because we do run a summer program here, and MBU's running a summer program. I, I wish, I just, I, I don't know enough about what happened a couple of years ago, but I remember, but what I remember about it was the student didn't wanna go here, but as Ty had said, it didn't matter where, just anywhere, either here or there would've been fine. I remember a couple of years ago, the issue was that the student did not want, there were no, there was no other seventh grader, there wasn't even a sixth grader participating in the summer program. So, the student felt like he was gonna be, he or she was gonna be tutored with, you know, younger kids and, and so there was a little bit more pressure to ask MBU to see if they could step in. But I just opened up an email that Ty had, I think, received, basically a similar email from Janet Hatton that said typically they don't take students who have not officially started at MBU yet. I don't know the details, I don't know the whys or the why-nots. But I, I do think, I would, I would hope that we would be able to do that here on a case-by-case basis, that if a student wanted to, that we should be able to. Did you ever, did you, did somebody here say, no, cannot happen here?
Well, originally, yes.
Originally, yes.
Because they said it was full and they had no...
Okay.
And then, then it was, there was potential of two more teachers going to help during the summer.
They were trying to hire two more tutors, yeah.
And then it was, then I got the email from U State in that it's been three years since you've accepted, Highgate School has accepted graduated students.
Yeah, okay.
And then the whole time, I'm still talking with Janet and I can't remember the lady from, from MBU, uh, central office.
With Daniel, you speak with Daniel?
No, um, Neboon? I, I'm sorry, but...
Well, we can look into it too, as well as...
Yeah, I, I think so.
That's the crossroads, that's not the crossroads person in charge at Swanson.
I think it's an opportunity for transition, so it's something I think, it's a, it's a nice thing for me to be aware of that's a sort of glitch between the school system that you can see whatever the solution is, that it's something that gets addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, I have one question without going too detailed. Is Highgate filling your needs or is MBU filling your need?
MBU's filling mine.
So, MBU is that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I guess we're on to Meishy property steering committee.
What we got, Steve, the fire, steering committee and chair of it. We had a situation and we found out that a section of that land where the school would put the fence up, originally they thought that was what they owned. And now we find out there's a little section, which I can show you if you guys want to see this. There's a little section there, not very large, but we're making a request to put that back in the town's hands. Originally, we thought it was anyway, but in order for us to do the groundwork we need to, we want to do it as a whole.
So, is that this right here?
I'm sorry, no, right here. This is the Nato's store, the store, this is between the M and R's and right here. This is where the old town shed was.
Yep.
This is gone now, and they never measured any stakes. But this little piece right here around is what we're requesting on to complete it for all of this, okay?
Cause this line is basically where that logging path is, isn't it?
Yeah.
And then this is that green area between the vets and the M and R's.
So, does it include the maples?
There's a, excuse me?
It, it, does it include that section of maple, right?
Yes, it does, Richard.
Yeah, over by where the fences and the water is.
Yeah, Richard, the other one.
Yep.
And then there's actually the deed to it in the back.
Yes, he played the ice skating and yeah.
Yep. It's right here, Richard. This little piece here between, that's where the trees are.
Yeah.
That's the, the old Nato's store.
Yeah.
And this is where the town garage was and by us, we originally, and everybody thought that the town did own all that.
Right.
But the school, actually Mr. Nato had deeded it to the school. And even though they put the gate, their, their fencing up, it's, uh, it wasn't what, without...
But, but where the fencing is...
That's where you guys all thought originally it was.
Okay, but that's, that's where you want the line to be, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Where the fencing is, you guys are okay there.
And then just beside the M and R's to here, then your fencing's going across anyway.
Yeah.
Over here, yeah. See, it's all...
Is this not part of...
Have you found out, um, the procedure that we need to do to get that done?
Yeah, I had spoke, uh, we're going to see what it takes for a lawyer to make sure that we've done it properly.
Yeah, we're...
Just because if you guys decide that works for you, hopefully you do. It's for our community of development of our future town and that would be a center of businesses and stuff like that when we get done. And then obviously, we'll bring that to the, back to the people, decide what's gonna be in that property from the Meishy property all the way. But that piece there would give us access to road for staying off the main road, you know what I'm saying? There's still plenty of room for traffic and stuff that wouldn't have to be all put to the front, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
That way we can have core road access?
Yep, right, core road for sure.
So, so it isn't gonna be part of the Meishy property, it's, it's gonna be something...
It would be all considered...
All the town property.
All the town property so that we could, what we're doing is we're doing a survey and a study of what we can do with it. So, that kinda stopped us from doing it because we thought we owned it.
So, I, I guess my question is, if you sold the Meishy property, would that land go with it?
Not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
No.
That's all about being two parts?
We, uh, we're hoping that it would be more than one partial from the Meishy property down to be able to market it if, if what the town sees fit to do. That would be all brought and do the, back to the town, tell them what we feel we could do with it and then you still have to have somebody walk, whatever. And then, you know, we do have, there is, you know, where the Steinhaus Cafe is, that we've been asked if we would give to the, to outplace the sharehold there. So, but I, we kinda told her, you know, you gotta wait, see what we need first for all that property to know. So, be, we don't wanna do anything till we know what we can do with it, all of it. Then if that's fit, then that, you know, there is interest. There's also interest in emails from other businesses, one particular that was quite large. Again, we have to be able to have it ready to do that and, uh, so that's where we're at right now. We're just the steering committee to see what we can do with it, draw lines on it and figure it out and then when we figured out what we can do, then present it back to the town. That's our, that's our interest in it for the center of Highgate. And hopefully we got some good interest, make the town grow a little bit. It wouldn't be a large growth, that's for sure.
So, that chunk is, what, about quarter acre?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know the measurement, but it's not very large. But, uh, Mr. Nato, I went over and got these from him and he had said that they had had pins across and he had told them when they tore the town shed, they should've drove some pins and they didn't.
So, Mr. Nato?
Yeah, so that should've been done as well, is, you know, that past that, that...
It would have to be surveyed, I believe.
Yeah. But the town, I'm sure we could handle that end event if everything worked out for us, we'll actually do that, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, but what do you mean you went and saw Mr. Nato?
No, you went to see Mr. Nye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, he's been gone for twenty hours!
Well, also, he's probably a guy stealing all the time.
Well, maybe, I'm sorry, yeah. I guess I got that wrong.
You're confusing me!
So, when the...
No.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, when the board purchased the property, there was no survey done prior to the purchase?
What board?
Uh, when the town...
No, the, uh, the, the town, to do that land there, we didn't, nobody knew, include past school board, that we didn't, the town didn't own it because, um, Mr. Nato had donated that, everybody thought.
To the town.
To the town, but it wasn't, it was to the school. It's just a little piece, so the assumption was that the town owned it. So, when we got going on it, then we realized that's how you find out, once you start doing your research, that whoops, that little corner where it, uh, isn't to us, it's to the school.
And a big thing was, the town always had a, well, they had a building on it at one time and then, uh, they had a, a skating rink here.
Yeah.
Tennis court.
Through the town.
Through the town and part of the old garage was sitting on it and, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And that's all school property?
That little piece.
What you just described was all school property?
Part of it.
Just a little part of it.
Yeah.
It isn't really a large area, but, no, that's okay, no question.
So, in the end, what we're doing is, are we just basically cleaning up the maps? Or is there gonna be changes out there as to what's already existing?
It, well, originally, everybody thought town owned it anyway. So, what we're looking to do is ask, have you turn it over to the town? So that the town can complete the front of the Meishy property as a whole before we go any further and we can't really move on it until we know how much, you know, just a little quarter of an acre can shut us down for some of the work that the town could do and, you know, have enough property to work with. And we don't know that, but in the same token, we thought we owned it anyway. So, and the school thought we did, meaning the town. So, now here we are and it's a small piece, but we'd like to complete, stay with it because we've already started the process with it. And then we find out after that that little piece can hinder us to have, you know, access off that property just to use it as a roadway if we needed to, not so much to build on it, to access all the other property. So, people don't have to have, you know, a lot of traffic flowing in the front when it could be accessed really on both sides. It could be accessed, uh, on the, well, first of all, by David DeSorci's store. There's access there and it would be access on the other one. So, it'd keep people off the main route and keep it kinda pleasant, okay, whatever. We'd like to see actually, you know, the front of what you're seeing now that we cleaned it up, the, the trees and the nice layout like that, something behind it, not necessarily rip everything out, you know? So, some of that and sidewalk as well, you know, that's part of that, coming to the school. We would figure that'd be real practical to actually add on to that for our kids and stuff to be able to not have to go on the main route to walk down the street when there's a walking path there already. So, we could continue that to the new sidewalk, I would put it, which would be really nice access, you know? It'd enhance the safety of the children as well, you know, the main road coming along.
Noah?
When the property was donated to the school, were there any stipulations placed in the deed that restricted its use and/or sale in the future?
They have the deed right there.
Doesn't say any?
And it doesn't state anything, it's just a, as a good gesture to the school.
Would this board actually have the authority to turn property over from the school's, um, I guess, ownership to the town's ownership?
Yeah, I feel would.
So, not usually.
Yeah, who else would?
Without taxpayer approval, I would think that this would be something you'd have to bring up at town meeting day and have a vote on it.
Connie?
Um, two things regarding what Noah just said. When we got easements, when we put drainage around the white building, when we got easements, the school board did that and it didn't take, didn't take any, any town, um...
I would, I'd like to...
We did that separately. And the second thing is, this is an Act 46 thing, better get this cleared up.
Absolutely.
Because if it's school property and after the first Friday of October or...
It possibly before.
And then it become, and we've merged, then we have to go separate then. Well, we do, we have limited state, but still a lot of other people.
I'd like to comment as well on that. Chair, do you wanna lead on that, that comment, either what we're...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably do that. So, I was gonna wait until we got into the Act 46, but that brings up another question. What about the property that goes with this...
Means here.
School?
Right.
What about the buildings, what about the land, what about that little piece, what about the piece where the Cassidy was? So, it's still our property, it is still your, the school's property?
No.
No, it won't be, it won't be...
It will be, it will not be.
It would be community, that right now, your buildings, right now, I think, your first question is that it's a lot easier. I mean, obviously, you, the select board, we'd contact an attorney, the school board would as well.
Right.
And, and work out whether...
That could be easy, yeah.
Right. But typically...
It's still property, it doesn't...
I don't jinx it.
What I didn't say was, it's not like it's state-owned, it's still...
Correct.
The community's property.
It, right now, it's the town of, of Highgate in a merged setting, all the communities...
Can we have one at a time, please?
Sorry, in a merged setting, like, in what was Franklin Central? The town owned the town school, the city owned the city school, Fairfield owned the, now Fairfield, city and town all own all three of those schools. So, you're right, the decision over, over the fence line would then be, you know, three, it, it would still likely be a school board that would make that decision, um, not three separate communities, but it does certainly make it a lot simpler to see if it can be done sooner than later.
James, has anyone had that control over?
Yep, what we're proposing isn't on a larger scale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're proposing, uh, similar to what the town Franklin is proposing, is to buy their school per dollar, turn it back over to the town so that the merged district would not have control over the property. Because the merged district, uh, is not favorable either to the town of Highgate or to the town of Franklin because of representation is not equal.
So, let's not muddy up the water here.
Shall we talk about that when we do Act 46?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna jump around a lot here.
Let's not muddy up the water, we wanna get, take care of that one problem first and then we go to Act 46.
Can I...
Yep, Connie.
So, I think, now, because we're talking about land and more, I think, um, given the memorandum of understanding you have about the so-called Cassidy property, which is a school property, I think there needs to be significant consideration about that. Because the state is going to make, the state board of education is going to make decisions by sometime in October. Okay, and that means that we will be having to, if they merge us, um, then, then it's too late.
Could it, like, can we, can, can the Highgate school board now, uh, turn that over to the town of Highgate? The Cassidy property, or is that...
I, I... Do you mean what?
No, no.
We are still the Highgate school, so...
Right, well, no, no, what I'm saying is, so it doesn't go into that Act 46, you know, so it isn't... Could it be turned over to Highgate, so, you know, you know what I'm saying, Noah, so it just don't, uh...
I think it could be turned over to another entity. My opinion would be the town of Highgate would not be my first choice. I mean, I don't know how they would manage it. If it's supposed to be intended for agricultural education, the town of Highgate does not have the resources to do that.
Sounds like it'd be closer to a library, community center, or something.
Maybe, or maybe its own designated trustees just for that purpose, another committee of some kind.
Just for that land, is what you're saying.
I don't know, but I...
I don't think the town of Highgate's interested in pursuing the property just in maintaining the community's right to this property.
Right, yeah.
Pretty much, I would, it could all be written and this would all have to be a legal decision anyway. Or it all could be written that for as long as Highgate School remains open, that it has full access and use of all of these properties.
Except that if there will be no, if it's merged, there will be no Highgate School.
I know that, that's what we're seeing now.
See, that's, that's, that's my fear right there, that, you know, it could be, it could be changed. Right now, Highgate School Board, I think, and, and the public is on board to see it doing for agriculture and gardening and all that, the other board could come in and say, well, we wanna put a superintendent's office there. They could, you know, you know, that's, that's a fear that I got, you know?
That there are students in every single one of those schools that could benefit from that kind of education. So, I would, I mean, to say that we only want Highgate kids there, you know, I know it's Highgate land and I really, I never got to meet Mr. Cassidy, so I don't know what his opinions were, but if he was that much of a proponent for agricultural education, I can't imagine he would say, well, you're from, you know, a town that's other than Highgate, so we don't, you know, we can't support your agricultural education?
Right, right.
But at the same time, we're not just including Highgate in this whole decision, and you as well, too.
Right, yeah.
So, could I just make a thought that we could actually work on this at the moment? Just to get this off your agenda and, you know, tell them, and then you can move on with your rest of your agenda? Then we're gonna come to that 46, you staying here anyway, on that end?
Yep.
Do that?
Yep.
Okay?
So, uh, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I personally don't feel comfortable making a decision on that property tonight. I would be more than willing to put it on the agenda for next month and probably make a decision then. I think it's, I agree that we need to move quickly before October. But there's kind of a big meeting next week that's gonna determine a lot of how we make decisions going forward.
But on our case, with what we're asking for, just that little piece in the corner, just for, and we're, is, we have time for that. If we don't get on down, say, you know, you take a month to do, maybe things will change then. So, I agree, we have, we have a little talk now. At least it's on the agenda, you guys are thinking about it, you have a chance to research it.
Yep.
And then we'll go from there, okay?
And we will research on how legally we process is to acquire that land.
Yeah, we're already doing that.
Do you wanna authorize me to, uh, reach out to Pietro Lynn? Have our attorneys speak to one another about this, what the process would be?
I would. The rest of the board agree, or?
Yes.
I would, I would definitely agree with that.
Do you need a motion to table this still? Next meeting?
I don't think so, I mean, this was just a disguise, says rate in the agenda discussion, so...
I think everybody agrees it's better to be proactive than reactive at this point.
What's that, Steve?
Better to be proactive than reactive, I guess.
Yeah?
Guard, guard yourself.
Alright, uh, so, uh, we'll definitely take into consideration, we'll get in touch with our lawyer and you'll be on the agenda for next, uh, next meeting, which is the ninth, August ninth here at 6:30.
Alright, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, buildings and grounds, roof update. Uh, Abe is here, he's the contractor that has been attempting to fix our roof. Uh, and he's pulled two valleys apart and the water damage is extensive. Uh, to the point, the subdeck is gone, uh, framing's pretty much gone and the framing wasn't up to standard to begin with.
Yeah, it's below.
For the pitch. Um, so, per Abe's recommendation, he's recommended that we reach out to our insurance company and start pursuing that possibility because the damage, Farx sees, the original quote, I mean, it's just... I, I actually got up there with him for an hour or so and looked it over with him and it's, it's, uh, really bad. I mean, probably one of the worst I've seen, it's...
Which two valleys?
He's, uh, you can, if you go outside, you can see the ones they've worked on, there's gray, uh, water and ice paper protecting them, but the one over by the kindergarten has been pulled up and then the one right here by the entrance has been pulled up. The one over here by the entrance, believe it or not, wasn't that bad. I was expecting it to be awful, but the one where the water was coming in and hitting the fire alarms, that's where the damage is severe. And then the opposing side, uh, the fourth grade wing towards the cafeteria, uh, we walked around on the metal and it feels like the subdeck is the exact same as what he found on the kindergarten side. So, once he pulls the metal up, I, I feel, and I agree with Abe, that it's gonna be the exact same issue. Yeah, and the problem, some of the issues are, the roof pitch is not enough for the kind of metal we have. The roof that was put on, Dave, how long ago was that, fifteen years ago? Well, it wasn't put on right.
Yeah.
Nothing was done right at all. So, we, we have fifteen years of leaking basically that we're now trying to fix. So, we've uncovered a hornet's nest and it's gonna be a mess. Uh, so, uh, our business manager is on vacation this week, I reached out to her. To her credit, she's already answered me, uh, through via email while on vacation, so I give her a lot of credit for that. She's gonna reach out to our insurance company on Monday and we're gonna start that process. Abe has been great about taking pictures all along the way, so we have lots of documentation and that's where we're at with the roof.
Do we know who did the roof fifteen years ago?
Yes, we do.
Are we in touch with them?
Nah, he no longer lives in the state.
I don't know.
Yeah, the problem is, uh, the, the timeframe to bring this back against him is far past. I mean, we, our statutes are, we would've had it done, we would've had it done within a year when it's been fifteen, so...
What about the warranty on the roof?
Well, typically craftsmanship is a year and then, I, I don't know, any manufacturer's gonna stand by a contractor that butchered a roof that bad.
So, so crash?
They worry to the metal itself, or they worry to the craftsmanship?
And the metal isn't giving up, it's the craftsmanship that's our problem.
Whatever was implied.
Right, cause we're having, just a second, Richard, we're having a lot of leaking from upper, uh, appendages through the roof, whether it be vents or, uh, sewer vents, chimneys, anything like that, everything leaks and it all runs downhill and everything below, anything, whether it's a chimney, vents or anything, it's just leaking and running down and it's destroying everything. Richard?
So, have you, uh, thought or discussed, what if our insurance company turns us down? What's our, what's our next, uh...
Well, here's the problem, we own it, we've opened the roof, we know what's there, we own it. So, here's the problem, and that's where, that's why we're ta- talking about it tonight. Is because if the insurance company doesn't help us, we're gonna have to have some serious conversations quickly. Because, uh, we, we can't patch it. You can't just cover it up and say, uh.
Well, he said, I talked to him the other day, he said that one of his guys fell through in one place. So, if you're falling through up there, it's pretty bad, you know, and so, you know, I, I think we gotta start figuring out, you know, if the insurance company doesn't help us, what are we gonna do so that's, and, and, and it's gonna come right down inside? We're gonna have to do something inside where the insulation it is too, and I, I, I think we're talking big bucks.
Oh, big, 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 big.
You know?
Yep, this is, uh, this is really worst-case scenario, and this is what we're hoping for not, but kinda what I was expecting, I hate to say. So, I think our first step is we gotta see what the insurance company says. Uh, Laura said she will get in touch with them Monday. And, uh, we're gonna try to set up, I mean, we're gonna get this ball rolling ASAP, try to get them up here to, uh, adjust it and whatnot. And, uh, if they do go with the insurance company and whatnot, most likely they'll reimburse us for monies we've spent so far, if this all falls into a claim.
Yeah.
But that's all stuff we're gonna have to work out. But I, I would say, we may have to have a special meeting again about the roof, if, depending on how next week goes with the insurance company.
You're gonna keep us informed?
Oh, yes.
Chris, is there any internal damage as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mold and?
We don't know for sure, but if it's been leaking that long, I don't see how there can't be mold. I mean, I, I've been around leaks long enough to know that water gets in that long. And that's, that's, that's the problem too, is that we, we know the roof and the subdeck shot, now how about the insulation and everything else that's, we don't know that's damaged, and that could.
Help for the insurance claim.
That's exactly why we wanna start pursuing the insurance, because this is, this is a snowball effect. I mean, we found the first problem, now what's the ten other problems that we haven't discovered yet? So.
So, is, is, I don't know, is, is Abe gonna be around when, when the insurance company comes?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll be available.
Yeah.
For any, any meetings that you guys need to take place as well.
Uh, I, I also try very hard to be here on the insurance, you know, so.
What's the, with current, I mean, what you found, what's the timeframe of being able to fix it?
That's another.
If you had the money today, how long is it gonna take to actually, for Kate?
Abe said he was willing to hire on more people and still try to meet our timeline.
It, it. It all comes down to what you keep finding, you know?
Yeah.
And right now, I don't know what's underneath, so every time we open a section, and if it's worse than what it's, what we expect, and you have to reframe, it all adds time.
Yeah.
You know, you can only, you can only do so much in such a, such a kind of frame, you know?
And then, obviously, as you know, we're at the mercy of Mother Nature. As long as we continue to have.
So far, so good.
Right, as long as we continue to have good weather like this, great, but, you know, this is Vermont, so.
Yeah, it can change it.
What was the original timeframe, in the best-case scenario?
He, he had allotted two months, and, uh, I, I feel he was expecting a lot of what he found. Because if everything was great and the subdeck was fine, and he was just literally repairing valleys, I think he probably could've done it a month, six weeks, something like that.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was figuring.
Yep.
I always try to add a little bit of time, because because of weather, you don't know what you're gonna run into. But this is pretty severe, so knowing what is there now and what I see, I don't, you know, two months is.
Oh, right, right.
That's gonna be, I mean, that, that'll be, that'll be pushing, but having it all watered tight, definitely before school, could have, you know, all, all new subdeck, all completely ice-watered, and, you know.
And then, the other thing is, because we're no longer patching just little sections, we have more options now. If we end up replacing entire sections of a roof, we can, instead of doing metal roofing, we can do more of a rubberized roofing, which is a complete sealed roof, it's made for this pitch. So, and believe it or not, it's actually a little cheaper than metal, so that might be an option where we can.
What's the?
Save some pennies in.
What's a like?
Bad situation.
Um, well, we can go over that, 'cause you can choose from different, uh, different builds, so.
Okay.
Um, warranty on a lot of it is, um, they do like, like a twenty-year full warranty on the whole thing. Just like any metal, same thing with paint, it's only a twenty-year warranty on the paint. And after that, you usually will go through a pro rate. But I can get all the information on the different companies for that as well, 'cause you have more than one option.
And that's for the next meeting, you should have.
So, he'll have it for next meeting, if not, we might have, uh, once again.
Special, yeah.
We might have a special meeting, and these might be some decisions that Buildings and Grounds have to make too along the way. Um, so that's one thing I was gonna say, maybe we should have a motion to give Buildings and Grounds the abilities to make some of these decisions quickly. Um, I, I guess I'll leave it up to the rest of the board, if they agree or disagree. I would need a motion.
I'll make that motion to, um, have, uh, Buildings and Grounds look into this a little further, and, and I'm not opposed to a special meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Any, all those in favor of having Buildings and Grounds, given Buildings and Grounds the ability to make some decisions between meetings, uh, all those in, uh, geez, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, passes, five zero. Wow. Okay, on a happier note, uh, I've got all the estimates in on redoing the front office area so that we can have a quote-unquote storefront instead of those two little windows. And everything fit within Pat's estimate. So, uh, we're gonna move the ball forward and try to get that done ASAP. Uh, the magnetic catches for the doors are also done, those are in, so that's good news too. Uh, and through having them here doing the catches, they actually pre-ran a lot of the wiring for the door that would, 'cause we have to put a counter shutter door in that works on the alarm system, so in case of an emergency, the door will shut automatically. And they pre-ran all the wires for us, so that actually saved us a little bit there.
For all the doors?
For all which doors?
All the doors are done?
Yeah, all the magnetic catches are done.
Okay.
And if we put, take that window out and have it a big opening, we're gonna put out what's called a counter shutter in. It's a, a coiled door that'll shut when they're closed, and in an emergency situation, it has to be able to close. So, it would be tied into our alarm system. So, if a fire, break-in, whatever, that door would close and secure that space.
Let me get your, our, my, I'll say it.
Yes, thanks a lot, Abe.
Thank you, guys.
So, that's all I have for Buildings and Grounds, um, other than I have business as usual. Um, I know they've been having some problems with a tractor. So, that's might be something we're gonna have to look at budget time, we might have to look into.
Did they send that down?
Yep.
I know I saw them the other day, and they said that you said, go ahead and send that down to John Deere.
Wow, yeah.
They, they're using a lot of oil, it does probably a good decision if they're using that much oil that.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, it's a cheap fix now, but if they let it go too long, it'd be a very expensive fix. So, that's all I have for Buildings and Grounds, uh, I guess we're on to Connie.
So, what's the story with the flags out here? Right now, the American flag is below the, a P O W flag, and none of them are fully extended.
I don't know.
I, that's, that's a topic I would like to bring up. I would, I would like to put a motion on the floor that we go back. I, I think it's a school, and I think it's elementary, I would like to go back to seeing the flag put up every day and taken down. You know, I just, I, I think it's, that's one thing that I think in the elementary schools, the kids like to help and stuff. I think we need, it's educational, the light, you know, I know, I, I just think it needs to be done every day. I, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to the old ways, putting the flag up and down, up in the morning, down in at dusk, you know, and, uh.
Second thought, uh, so, Richard, you made the motion to, say, what we, that, that's called a flag, um, what do they call that? There's a name for it, flag.
To raise the flag daily.
Yeah, but there, isn't there an official name for that? I used to know, anyway, so, raise the flag daily.
Hire the flags.
I'm thinking of dropping the flag.
I won't be like.
I, I have seen other schools do it.
But, uh.
Taking it or putting it up in the line.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we do in Richmond.
Two kids a day and.
Flag etiquette, or a flag.
Maybe that's what it is.
Etiquette, that's, that's good work.
I know down in the elementary, Richmond, it's a big thing that the young kids get to put the flag up and down and.
Yeah, Elberg's the same way they do it.
I think it could be, um, do I think, I, I, I'm fully supportive of the idea. I think it, it's easily done in the morning, the, the dusk part, uh, could be done, but not, we won't have a student around here all the time at dusk, so.
You know, I.
Certainly a morning.
I know it, I know it, uh, Richmond, our night guy comes in and takes it down.
Yeah.
About, uh, two thirty, three o'clock.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's when the, he, when he starts his shift, that's his job, he takes the flag down and.
Without kids?
Without, and, and at the high school with, without kids, because.
I like the idea of, of, of kids doing this, participating in it.
Yeah.
Um, and I know the morning part would be really easy to do.
Yeah.
Um, the afternoon is part of the after-school program, maybe. Um, I would, I would, we'd have to have somebody that's definitely here all the time in the after-school program, and, um, which isn't, doesn't run all, every, every week all year long, so there are certain sessions, but, but certainly, I think, every morning. And there, there's a, I've got a student I know that would just do that in a heartbeat.
You know, I.
The idea would be to share it, though, admit, let other people, other kids be involved. I, I think it's very, that's, that'll problem. I like the idea.
God, a little clerical stuff, can we get a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, discussion, uh, Ty.
So, I'm in favor of this highly. Um, you just have to set it up with one contact, uh, one person in charge of that flag, you know? Whoever it is, is, is not, I don't care, but, you know, you get your days where the president orders the half staff for.
That, that should be your head custodian, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm a head custodian and that's my job, and all, and all. It's not a hard thing.
Many of days that I've lowered the one at the ball field and pull in and lower this one, just because I'm here, you know what I mean? Let's do it right, so. That's just the only suggestion I would have is whoever you get, to make sure they sign up for them, email reminders when the principal, when the president.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you know the Pearl Hall every day, you know Memorial Day, all that, every year, but the, the ones that.
Well, you, usually it's, uh, it's, uh, is it secretary of state or something emails the principal? And, uh, then the principal passes, I know in Richmond, the principal passes it on to the head custodian or the facilitator and.
I think there's a way to access, uh, to the computer, the internet, where it will tell you that when you have to. Yeah. I think it is a mail, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
The same email that sends out the, on the job.
Yeah, yeah, the email, yes. Yeah, it wouldn't work for when the governor would, would, uh, assess it, but you just have to check and see what the town flag's at, the post office flag's at, and the ball field, and.
And your flags last a lot longer, if you bring them in at night, your flags are gonna last a lot longer. Like this one out here, with the amount of wind, it's quiet every day, all winter long, you're going through two to three flags, we need to test, uh, uh, calendar.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it would be a great addition to the social studies curriculum, to teach kids about the meaning of the flag and, and, and things around that.
Right, okay, I agree. So, all those in favor of having, uh, students raise the flag in the morning and someone to lord it at night? Uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes, five zero.
Yes.
Uh.
Is it, is, could I just ask you, the, the board's intention that we would start that now, though, with, um, with a head custodian, and then to incorporate this with kids when the students come back to school?
Yes.
Yes. I think, I think you have a problem with the lanyard and, and, I think that's part of the problem. I think something stuck or there's only.
Well, I noticed that, I think it, something's twisted there.
Yeah, well, I think something's.
The last sign I heard was the lane was gonna come, you know, the electric was gonna come up through the block and drop and things like that.
Well, let's pursue getting it fixed. I've seen the minor compare to the roof, so let's, uh, go for the.
But, uh, did we answer Pat's question, are we gonna deal with it immediately?
Yes.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Okay, once again, Act forty-six. Uh, response from Secretary of State, uh, AGS recommendation. We're fortunate to have Connie here tonight, she's on the Act forty-six committee, and, uh, hoping she can fill us in on.
Well, we'll do the best we can. Um, so, we submitted our, uh, I can never remember what the A C, A C stands for, but our amended governance structure, uh, to the Agency of Education. We, um, it's, what, it's the members of the Act forty-six committee meeting, our superintendent and two guests, um, attended, had a sit-down with the Agency of Education, when Rebecca Holcomb was still the Secretary of Education, and explained, um, what our point of view was, and, um, the things that we felt were very, very important that we can do without having to be merged. And then, the, the legislature required that the Secretary of Education have a plan for all schools that had not merged, or had no merger plans in the works, um, that, um, they would provide a plan for how, what those schools were going to do. And, and we knew that from the get-go, that was gonna happen in, in two thousand eighteen, and so it has. And so, um, the agency, the secretary, the, the interim Secretary of Education, um, did that for many schools, and essentially, you should read it, because parts of it are, a lot of it, there, there were several schools that were included in it. I don't remember how many there were, but there are a bunch of them in that, I mean, I'm, we're talking.
Forty-four different school districts.
Yes, yes, so, and a lot of the words in the finding that, that was given to us, that was determined, is common language in a lot of different schools, uh, programs, so that they did a good job of cutting and pasting. Um, well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and there's some, some real egregious things that are left out in here in this thing, and, um, but the bottom line is, after you read all the pages, the secretary trusts that the community's concern for the well-being of all their children will impel them eventually to embrace the opportunities of a unified structure and work together to improve educational opportunities and equity for all students in the region. Accordingly, the secretary believes that the best means for meeting the Act forty-six goals for each district individually and for the region is for the State Board of Education to merge the governance structures of Mississauga Valley Union School District, the Franklin School District, the Highgate School District, and the Swanton School District into a single unified union school district that provides for the education of its pre-K through twelve students by operating multiple schools. The secretary makes this recommendation because the legislature has determined that a larger governance structure with its inherent flexibility and opportunities is the best means of meeting the Act forty-six goals, which is the lodestone for this document. However, this recommendation is made with full awareness that without the commitment of the communities to create a new definition of us, potential opportunities will not be realized, and unification may be blamed for any encountered difficulties.
Not appealing.
So, so, as you read more, is, more of this in there, you will find that community sentiment is not highly valued.
No. No.
Um, uh, four towns, one Sheldon, Franklin, oh, by the way, and Sheldon, the resolution for Sheldon was that they were going to have to join Franklin Northeast and be part of the pre-K eight schools in Franklin Northeast, which are Montgomery, Bakersfield, Berkshire, and Sheldon. So, we had warned votes. All, I mean, it wasn't just, uh, uh, it wasn't just a show of hands, it was a warned vote. And we all know the, what the outcomes were at, two towns voted unanimously to not merge, um, Highgate was one vote.
Yeah, and she accidentally rode the wrong way because she was not being protected.
And, and so, and so essentially you have three unanimous votes and I think the messenger in the state had a big, I'm pretty sure that Swanton voted not to merge.
They were majority not to merge, yes.
Right, and the messenger said they voted to merge, but, but they had more, uh, votes to, to, um, to merge than, than the rest of us do. So, next, so we have one last chance to make our case, and that's, um, on.
Wednesday, July.
Wednesday, July eighteenth at nine o'clock in Newark, Vermont, Newark.
Yeah, and it, it's hard to get there from here.
Yes, it's about two hours from here.
So, um, and we will have twenty minutes to make our case. Um, we can make an oral presentation, we have twenty minutes, we can use all twenty minutes or we can, um, use ten. Um, people can have questions, they need to be put, we need to put them in writing, um, we, we need to bring lots of people to support our proposal. There are going to be, how many other ones are there? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. No, ten, ten other schools during this time, so we don't have a lot of time. And we have, the presentation has to be, we have to give them really compelling reasons why we should not have to merge. We have three choices, we can comply, and then, you know what? Then we're, then there's a timeline for doing that and they'll give us samples of articles of agreement. We can fight the merger. Or, and the, the third one is, if we fight the merger, it means we're not complying. Um, or we can close a school before the decision by the State Board is made and operate a private school. Okay? Number two and number three are not easy things to do. The question was not answered in Franklin, what happens to money? The money you got from your local taxes and your state, uh, and federal monies, that wasn't, there were a lot of things that weren't, weren't explained from that. So.
Who's making the presentation, Connie?
Bob Berger.
Okay.
Um, I. We had, we, we had Margaret, Margaret McLean, who has been in a group of people who have fought Act forty-six tooth and nail since its inception. She's a very smart lady, a former educator, former, former State Board of Education member, so she knows the ins and outs, uh, how the State Board works, and, um, a- and she, she had, she had a lot of advice to give. Okay? Um, she also said, don't be afraid to take more time if, if you want to. You know what? It's your time, and if you keep going, that's okay. Um, bring lots of people to support your proposal, our proposal, and she even advocated for T-shirts that say the names of our schools on them.
Cool.
Well, they're gonna be, uh, we are not gonna be the only school there, we will be the first one to present it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Uh, Franklin Northwest will be the first one.
Franklin Northwest.
Yeah.
Right, and it doesn't include.
That excludes Sheldon too.
No, it doesn't, no, Sheldon has a separate one.
I know, they have their own time, they won't be in that nine o'clock.
No, but they'll be in the one before lunchtime.
Yeah.
So, when that, that time we have, is that Highgate on that time, Swanton on that?
No, it's Franklin, it's, no, it's Franklin Northwest.
That's right, so that narrows that right there on the, for our talking.
Well, no, okay, so, yes, I, I think, I thought, I thought the presentation that was given in Franklin was really good.
Yeah.
Um, I think it needs to have some references to the situation in Highgate and what's important to us. Okay, 'cause I, you know, not that a lot of those things that Franklin said don't apply to us.
Right, a lot of them.
Okay, but when we met with the, uh, Agency of Education, her question is, well, what about your scores?
Well, they're up.
They just went up.
They just went up.
Okay.
So, there you go.
Well, and so that's some good information that hopefully I can get.
I can give that to you.
Okay, um, so, and that's good when you're, I mean, it's a great, I think, I, I think that's awesome.
They went up a lot.
And they, and they, that's good, and they continue to go up a lot.
Right.
Okay, so, um, so I do think we have some specific things that, and, and I'm gonna be in touch with Bob to let him know what some of those are. I'd be willing to listen to any of you who think there are some things that should be spoken to about that, and I think score is one of them.
Connie, I think it's important too, when Margaret spoke to the group, she said that, you know, after there's all the presentations, there will be public comment. There's only half an hour for all of the community that wants to speak about those ten schools, districts. So, uh, it's wonderful if you come and it's wonderful if you wanna speak, and I'm sure there's a process for that. There is an opportunity to write down your comments and send them, because all of that will be part of the record.
And your questions.
Yeah.
Because the time allotted for, for the public to be heard for our, ours is from quarter of twelve to quarter after twelve.
Yeah.
So, you probably get two minutes to speak, and in that two minutes, whatever one says has to be very memorable. Okay, but then you can add, you can submit your comments.
Yeah.
Along with it. So, um, write your public question, summarize the contents, and then submit the entire, um, quest, your am, question to the State Board, um.
And in addition, um, Bob had a good point, or Dawn had a good point, or, and stating, you know, right, right to your representatives.
Yes.
You know, just flood them with, um, your concerns, you know, they're the folks making the decisions that, on the grand scale, um, so tell people, right, right, right.
Absolutely.
They don't know, they're not hearing from us.
We had members of our, 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 um, legislative delegation at the meeting. All of them who were there, except two, said if, they would, would not vote for Act forty-six again. Um, Senator Brock, or would be, no, he is senator, Brock said that he wouldn't, um, just get rid of it. He, but he said he would do, it would need, it needed major alterations, not tweaking, but major changes. And, um, uh, the, the representative from Swan voted, said he wouldn't vote for it. I think Cindy Weed, with the, that's Ennisburg Montgomery, said she would vote to alter things and not to change it. They were surprised by some of the things and the way the Agency of Education has handled the directive of the legislature. They felt that some of the things that the Agency of Education has done were not in the spirit of Act forty-six, is that a fair thing to say?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, Margaret McLean also was, she laid our chances right on the line, and she said they're not good. And that's why it's really important to get as many people go as we can and to make sure that they're, they need to remember Franklin Northwest.
Ty.
So, up until just this conversation, I knew there was a meeting the eighteenth. I cannot find any information, and I do a lot of reading of meetings and stuff. When, and, you know, I'm not gonna go all day long for the twenty minutes, right, but we're, we gotta do something more, like.
Well, we, we went to.
Tomorrow and.
Yeah.
And over the weekend, Monday, Tuesday, get people to know.
Well, I, we went to, a few of us went to the MBU meeting, it was very, very good. I, I get, I have to say, I was kind of on the outside of some of that, and, um, the presentation went well, I thought. Um, and then I, I read it in paper for Franklin, and I was sorry I missed that one.
Well, the thought with the Act forty-six committee is that we've had, well, it, in every town, we've had at least two meetings in each town, starting from the, from the get-go, um, but different towns haven't heard what other people were saying.
Right.
And so, we thought, the Act forty-six committee thought that that would be beneficial to hear what other people s- are saying, um.
I had no idea about Sheldon, I had no idea what was going on there.
Yeah.
And those people were quite vocal and.
Uh, I think they're having their information meeting tonight.
They are, yes.
Yeah.
So, 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 um, I believe Franklin is taking a bus of people over. I don't know what the status of that is, I know they had a sign-up. So, I think if you, if you get in touch with the town clerk.
Or Bob Berger. I also put on the Facebook, our Franklin Northwest Facebook page, the agenda for the eighteenth,
Yes.
and that has the times and everything, and there's also the email address of the Secretary for the State Board of Education, so if anybody wanted to email comments to her, um, we could do that too.
So.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much, so, I guess, you're kind of elevating the room. You know superintendent, what is, I think I know what your stance is, why is your stance of, of support for Act forty-six?
Well, it's a community, just, I mean, I believe that it's a community decision and the community has made itself really clear. A superintendent works at the will of the board, so when the board takes a motion and says, we're going to fight this way or that way, then that's my margin of error.
Okay. A lot different, uh, and I, and I appreciate that, and.
So. I would also ask the board members and the principal, at the same time, what are your thoughts? Because as much of a fantastic job that Connie has done and the Act forty-six committee has done, if they don't have your backing, they're going to Newark for nothing.
Well, I'm going to Newark on Wednesday, and personally, speaking for myself, they one hundred percent have my backing. And I will be there on Wednesday, I'm taking a day off to be there. In fact, I'm carpooling with a few people, I'm bringing more than just me, so. Uh, I, Act forty-six, the reason I got on the school board in the first place.
Just been with it for a year and a half?
Hmm.
You've been on that committee for?
I'm not on the committee, but.
Not, not the committee, but you've been a part of that.
I've been on, this is my third year.
Third year.
Just think, if just look at the countries, what the country's been doing as a whole, what really has had an effect and made people change their minds? A lot of people go out.
Voices.
And start saying, no, this isn't okay. It's not okay to say that community sentiment isn't important, it's, which it says in the, in the Secretary of Education's, um, ruling.
And that sentiment is actually illegal vote.
Mm-hmm.
So, the Department of Education is telling you that anybody who voted in Highgate, they don't give a damn.
Yeah, that's what we're feeling.
And they don't wanna follow the democratic process, they're gonna do whatever the hell you, they want to.
And if, 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 if we do merge and it doesn't work, they're not gonna assume any responsibility yet.
You just said that.
Right. It also says that they believe that the best judge of who can provide a qual, the best quality education for our schools isn't a local school board, or one or two, it is a unified board, a regional, and the state. I'll take that one for, you know, put that one.
And a couple of, at the MBU meeting, that actually came up a couple of times that they kept saying there wouldn't be tax changes or increases, but there's proof that there actually was.
Right.
And secondly, I wanna just kind of throw back on the floor too, that was also brought up, that this is not the first time that Act forty-six has come to life, and they've, they've been shot down twice before.
Well, actually longer than that, so, in answer to your question, Sharon, I have been opposed to consolidation, merger, whatever anybody has called it for the last twenty-plus years, and I believe in Vermont keeping, you know, their local control. I know people laugh about that now because they say we don't have a lot of local control, but we really do in the end. Um, all of our voices are going to show that, in my opinion. Um, and this has come around many times, many, many times. I was a school board member, um, previously, many moons ago. I've seen this dance more than once, uh, and, uh, I am here to just continue fighting it. Um, because I, I really strongly believe that each community knows what's best for their children. State of Vermont doesn't know you from Adam, or me. Um, so, their concern for the well-being of Highgate's children gets lost somewhere on me. Um, and as far as money goes, that Steve just brought up, you know, it's been shown there were great incentives in dangling the carrot out there, but those incentives will disappear.
Mm-hmm.
And it will become more pricey in the long run. And twenty-plus years ago, this started as, let's consolidate school boards and make them smaller because they're expensive. Well, that wasn't the case, small towns were paying their school board members ten bucks a meeting, right?
I know, that, that's, that's so crockery, they still give that as one of the ways you save money.
Exactly, so, and.
Three thousand dollars.
I, I'm gonna share with you.
Three thousand something dollars.
I came from a district, uh, Chittin East, where, um, my school board started, uh, we didn't take our money, we put it back into our budget. Because we're a little school that didn't have a lot of money, and so, five school board members, we dumped our whopping three hundred bucks each a year back into the budget. Um, today, it is my understanding that, if not all, the majority of the school board members, the Chittin East district, do not take a paycheck. Um.
Do not?
Do not. And they take, they push it back into their budget. Um, so, it's not a lot of money, we're not, we're not saving a lot of money, um, consolidating school boards and whatnot. The other concern is, we're a little school, so now we have one big unified board. Who really is going to care when they're living in Swanton, let's say, I'm just using it as an example, but another community other than ours care about what our needs are here in Highgate, what we need to do.
But a roof is falling in.
Why do they wanna spend the money in our school? So, that's a lot of why I've always been opposed to this, is because I don't want somebody who doesn't have a vested interest to be making decisions for my community's children.
Steve.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion to the school board that after Wednesday, we figure out what the state thinks they're gonna do to us, that we need as a community, uh, select people and school, get together and have some special meetings before any of this hits the fan, so that we're all on the same page. Because it's good to come to one meeting here and then, okay, but this is coming, there's no surprise that what the state wants to do. And my personal opinion, I've stated it time and time again, I don't feel we should merge with anybody because they don't have the interest that we have in our own students. So, uh, I feel we should, uh, when, after Wednesday, we're talking about having to find out what's really in their mind. So, uh, I feel we should, uh, when, after Wednesday, we're talking about having to find out what's really in their mind. But if they already don't care if all of us vote me down, I really don't see where they would care about talking to us for twenty minutes. Uh, my personal opinion, after we find out, way before anything happens, I think we should all get together as a town, school boards, and really talk about this. And I think, you know, everybody here is on the same page, we don't want to be run out of, where somebody's gonna control our town. And if that happens, I merge, Swanton controls us, and that's a topic, you know that. And Franklin, it sounds like they wanna go out, they're not gonna be controlled by nobody.
Franklin has, Franklin's has an important concern that we don't have. And their concern is that they have a hundred plus students and they're small.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and that, that is, that is not a concern that we have.
That we have, right.
Okay. I do wanna say something though, and I think something that we need to be careful on. When the, our Act Forty-Six Committee started, it was built on the fact that the five goals of Act Forty-Six are great goals and there's something we should be talking about regardless if we're talking merger or not. Because they're, they are, they're important to the success of our kids, meaning the success of our school, meaning the success of our community. And those people were gonna take care of me while I'm in the old folks home. But, uh, and so, when we did our work, okay, we took a lot, we took a very hard look at what's working and what's not, and how we need to up our game. And I, okay, so I was on the SU board back in the late nineteen eighties, when we were fighting the feds over bilingual repayment. And I, and then I've been on, was on the board, SU board here. But my last few years in the board, that SU board ha- has met more times, they used to meet four times a year. Okay, so that board has met much more often. Um, there has been an exchange of ideas among the board members. Uh, and all of that, I think if you talk with board members during that time, they will tell you, hey, we didn't know you guys were doing that. That sounds good, how can we do that? Or, or, and so, do we need a merger to do that? We're already doing that.
Yeah, we are, in a sense.
Uh, it can, it can get better, of course it can get better.
It could be, definitely.
We, we share now, we still.
We, we do a lot here and share services and, and whatnot, which is, I think, half the battle. Um, that is happening around us or in places that don't do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that helps cut costs. And I've always felt that if the fish was more toward, how do you, how do you make shared services work in a school district? Um, then they would find that there was a cost saving. And yes, I will be in Newark as well, Wednesday.
I feel everybody here will be.
And the other thing too is Connie said it the other night in Franklin, we'll get no credit for the fact that we're already a merged district.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Very much.
Yeah.
Seven through twelve.
I'd even, I would even go as far to say, and I agree with what Connie said, that we were pretty much merged at the F, uh, the SU level. I'm on the SU board and it's a very collaborative meeting.
I used to be.
Yeah.
It, it's, uh, I, I'm, I, I feel that we don't get credit for that either. I mean, I think we worked very well as a district together.
Shared services all the way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just, it's unfortunate that the state thinks that they could be better without having taken a look even at this process, it's already in place.
Coming out.
Right. But no, instead we'll make you a meeting that's difficult to get to in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
Where it's very unlikely that any of your town members will show up, because we're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
Connie, with, with this merger, would the, would, would the, if we did merge, would the budgets pass? With, with all your, with all your investigating, was it feeling that the budgets would pass easier? Or, or would the budget take harder to pass?
I, I don't, I, I don't know that we had a formal discussion about that, but I think we took a look at, at our, our districts now and said, well, who has a hard time passing their budget and who doesn't? And who's in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you look at the MBU budget, that's a tough budget to pass. Okay, um, the Franklin budget passes from the floor. The Sheldon budget, I think one year they had a tough time. Um, and then last year, we had our tough time, but up before that, there had been a, a tough time for me. Well, you guys know, you were on the board then.
Yeah.
So, when you put all that money together, I, you know, I don't see how it's more transparent, how the budget, budget's more transparent. Instead of having five million dollars, you're gonna have like thirty-five million dollars.
So, so, so it's a good chance that it's gonna be harder for it to pass?
Speaking from, speaking from myself, I know that Highgate School Board, when they present the budget at town meeting day, they have been financially responsible in thinking about Highgate's tax pay.
Yeah?
I won't know that, that merged board has done the same thing. Because, you know, I mean.
Right.
You're probably not gonna get a yes, the yes vote from meeting next year that you've got to.
It'll become. It'll become polluted, it won't be focused.
Right.
Speaking solely from myself and giving you the reasons why.
A, a, and, and I think there's a lot of community members that are gonna, that's what I'm afraid of, that are gonna think just like you're thinking.
Yeah.
You know, and it's.
Well, Richard, you and I talked about this a, a lot of times.
Yeah.
The, the advantage of, of bringing your budget to town meeting day is when the day is done, you have a budget.
Yeah.
Noah?
I think if you merge, you're going to have your budget voted on Australian ballot.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, they tell us, but they haven't told me how they can, don't have to. But no, 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 but no, that's, that's.
I don't know how they can employ that.
There's, they, there, that's what I think.
There was a memo, I did see that, you're right Connie.
Yeah, they say, it's, it's in, it's in here that you don't have to vote by Australian ballot.
Cause that was a fear.
I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I have that idea too.
Yeah.
But so, so like in, like in Swanton, they already do Australian ballot, Highgate we don't. It, is it gonna have to be one, like Highgate would do it the way they wanna and?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
No, it would be at the, it would be the decision of the new unified board. So, if Swanton does it one way, chances are that's how we would do it.
Highgate's gonna do it.
Not saying that's the way it would be, but.
If you offer, if it was offered by Australian ballot, then it offers the opportunity for many more people to vote on the voting.
Right.
Which is true.
Currently, because it's voted on the floor between ten and noon sometime, it's difficult for people, for all, for the majority of the community members to go. So, you may see your numbers increase and not necessarily in a positive way.
Right, you know, I, I, I've always been against the Australian ballot, I've always liked to do it town meeting style and you get to see everybody and, you know, I, I like, I like.
Well, you get, I think you get a lot of more information to go with your voting too, cause you get to see the.
You get less voters but more informed voters.
Yeah.
Or the opposite way, you get more voters but less informed.
Mm-hmm.
Richard and I were working at MBU when MBU went to Australia. And the year that they, the year prior, theater was full, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And next year, you may have had two dozen, and that's push.
Had the information meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's even less now, you, you, you get area board members.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Right there.
In answer to your question, Sharon, uh, I'm against Act Forty-Six, I have been. And I'm a local boy, been here fifty something years and I like the little town of Highgate and I like to see it stay the way it is.
Okay, uh, so, once again, everyone that's watching, the meeting is Wednesday, Ju-, uh, July eighteenth in Newark, Vermont. Uh, and I believe we go on at nine thirty.
I got that, I have that here.
I had the agenda, but I didn't print it out.
Nine thirty?
Uh, and then public comments for us is at twelve.
Quarter, twelve to quarter after.
At eleven forty-five.
And Sheldon would appreciate it if we stayed, cause they're just before.
Yep.
Public, uh, comments.
And if anybody wants to submit written comments, uh, on the Franklin Northwest Facebook page, again, there's the agenda for Wednesday's meeting and also the email address for Suzanne Sprague, who is the Secretary for the State Board of Education. And that's where you would send your written comments.
And if anyone would like a ride, I believe you can get in touch with Franklin's town clerk or Bob Berger. And, uh, they have, I believe they've chartered a bus to go up, they're trying to.
I mean, Marsh, Marshall's driving over?
Marshall Curtis, one of the other.
Or both.
I, the thing that, the bottom line that what bothers me is, two things bother me. I agree with you that we do know a lot, that we don't have a lot of, of control, local control. And for, well, if you do the just money, that's true. But then there's that other really important ingredient, and it's the connection with the community and access to parents and kids playing on the playground even when school's not in session. And all of those things that, um, you see a teacher, you know, in the, the grocery store or those sorts of things, it's those things. Or, oh, by the way, do you know that, you know, this family, you know, they had a house fire and they need some help? All of those things that help to build a genuine community within the school and it, and, and it goes outside. And you can't pay up, put a dollar sign on that unfortunately. But it's really, really important. You know, those of you who sent it, your kids send to you for the first time, do you have some concerns about that? Do you have some concerns about that time?
Absolutely.
And you are a student there.
Absolutely, probably why I have some concerns.
But, those guys. Uh, you're a good socialist, I understand that. But, um, that's not so much. And you know what, if you, if you're a new parent, you can come in during this summer to check things out.
When I moved here, I didn't know anybody, I learned, learned about people through the school.
Yes, exactly.
Cause I had two kids. And I have, I have a, a seven-year-old now, so I'm, that's why I'm back.
And, and, and those things, like I said, you can't put a dollar sign on it. So I think we need to tell the state board that they need to have a good judgment, a good judgment and courage to acknowledge that one size doesn't fit all.
No.
And by jingle, we have one size fits all, seven through twelve. And, and so let's, and, but, you know, but let's keep our community-based education for our young ones where it's really, really important, the community piece is important, not that it's not an MBU, but it looks different.
Yeah.
It looks different.
And, and there is an economic piece.
Yes.
For Franklin, if you take away the school, which is pretty much the center of Franklin, and you don't have many businesses, and you can't attract new businesses because you don't have schools for the children to go to, what is that going to do to that community?
The whole town.
Financially, that's, uh, suicide. Um, yes, we're fortunate at the moment to have over three hundred children, but that doesn't mean that our numbers could have dropped to one fifty and the government decide that, oh, well, you know, your roof is bad, building is falling down over here, and instead of putting our money with you, Swanton decides, let's build a bigger school down there, here's your to- tax bond vote and, um.
We'll tuition your students.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that has a hard economic feature to a small town like ours.
It does.
You know, as we try to encourage businesses to come here, to make our green list larger so that our per household tax goes down, that depends on good, solid school structure. You have to have that for businesses to come, to bring in new employees, to bring in new families to the community. It makes a big difference to a small town, and when you get a board that's appointed, deciding these things for you without having a full idea of the scope of the decision, it could be extremely detrimental.
Well, the only last thing I have is, is on the financial side. I'm reading the, the article in the Messenger, they asked, I wanna say the interim Secretary of Education.
Yes.
What districts that have merger are seeing for financial savings. And her quote was something to the fact that we're hearing that it's saving money. Well, if I talk to enough people, I wanna hear anything that I want to hear, right? If you can't show me a piece of paper or email or some proof, you're hearing that it, it doesn't matter, I mean, like I said, if you talk to whoever. You don't find somebody to get.
I had a customer that is part of a merged district and, granted, this is a very small sample, but I asked her about, uh, their merger process and if it's showed any savings and, uh, the transition and whatnot. And she said as far as savings, they've actually found lots of pitfalls, it's cost money. Uh, and as far, and one of her comments too, about the unified board and managing all the different schools, she was the last one to present for her school, and she said by the time they got to her, the board members were ready to go home, they weren't even listening. So you go from being very concerned about your building, yours, uh, administration and your kids to now you're worried about all the kids and all the administrations and all the boards and you're trying to do this all in one night? I think that's a lot to ask of a board, personally. I mean, that's a lot of management you're putting on people that I, I just think it's a lot to ask, I, and I just don't see how you can do as good of a job if you're managing five buildings as opposed to one. I just don't see how you can do it.
And I think you guys do a fabulous job. This is a lot like the select board position, everybody comes to you when they have a problem, nobody comes to listen, you're getting formed, but you do a great job, and I'd rather have you controlling our education system than monthly.
And whose needs are gonna be more important, ours, Franklin's, Swanton? And who's gonna make that decision is that board. And that board is gonna be made up of a select, and it was said at that meeting in MBU by one person, that I don't think it's all doom and gloom, but still, it needs to be weighed out, what's the most important and who's gonna make that decision?
You put the comment, Chris, just then, we're leaving and somebody's coming behind us right now?
Mm-hmm.
What would you feel like doing? You look at your watch, you say, wow, I gotta be here another hour, two or three or four? You're not gonna like it, that's understandable, and that's where that level, and what's coming on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that that Wednesday is a waste of our time, but we're gonna be there.
Is it just due diligence or what?
And that's just a personal opinion, I'm gonna burn a whole day myself, I'm self-employed, I'm kicked out from, from jobs. I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna try to be loud and sensible, but in the same token, I, I go with that comment because just like tonight, we go to a lo-, uh, we have our own meetings, and, uh, you know at the end of that meeting? We're tired, it's hard to think straight, it's hard to, after you've worked all day, and then you got town affairs to deal, and then, of course, I'm sure your boards are saying, I deal daily on comments for the town, I see it every day. And sometimes I take an hour out of my, out of my busy schedule for the town, or ten minutes, or sometimes half a day. And, uh, when I get back, I'm saying to myself, wow, I just, I gotta work later, I should learn to have a day, okay?
We're all laughing with you, not at you.
Yeah.
You're sympathizing.
Would you all that, yeah, you all day, that's just not gonna function. And I don't believe they really, that is the function, I'd say that on camera, still is. Uh, it's too bad, but it's what it is.
We get the phone mainly, we get the phone calls and the emails and stopping in the store, you know, oh yeah.
You can't handle it. So, without somebody stopping you.
Not usually.
Multiple meetings a year, getting calls in the middle of the day to come look at a rotten roof.
One meeting a month.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Yeah, one meeting a month, that's the biggest fan.
We get all fat ourselves on the back, you deserve it, you know, but no doubt about it, uh, you don't get credit for it. You know, you just, you're there, you're just.
Well, in the end too, uh, like I said.
You know, really, you do get paid a lot, it isn't about a dollar.
Well, I can't. I got out and I came back, so it's not that bad.
Yeah.
I've done that three times, something's wrong with it.
Alright, so, once again, just to review, July eighteenth at nine thirty, we go up in front of the state board in New York, Newark, Vermont.
Which is on the northeastern side of Vermont?
Which is over by, uh. Which is over by, uh.
Greensboro?
Greensboro and Burton, or Barton and.
Barton.
Barton.
Down by Barton.
Barton, that's not bad.
That's, that's not too bad.
We have a son that went to Linden, so Barton's not bad.
It's closer than Linden, barely.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
And where in Newark?
It's at the school, I believe.
Yes.
That's the only thing in Newark.
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, it's all they got.
Grocery stores.
No, nothing.
Nothing, they have a school.
Food will bring you drink.
Yeah.
Probably bring a chair.
And maybe a folding chair.
Bring a chair.
Honestly, someone from the agency of Ed who is helping to get this set up next week, called me, I'm sure they're calling other superintendents, say, how many people do you expect, and I told him, and he said, picture Franklin's gym, cut in half, that's about the size of the school, and he said, I wonder if we're gonna have enough chairs, so, honest, I'm, I'm, I'm not really being facetious. If you have a beach folding chair or something, you.
Might have to be outside.
You honestly may, well, you may wanna be there, and then leave, um, and, and wait around, and then come back, you may wanna sit outside. Um, I, you know, to, to then wait for Sheldon, and go there.
Good, bring a truck.
Yeah. No, and, and so honestly, they did say, there's, there's no restaurant in town, no little convenience store, bring some water, bring some cereal bars or something, if you're gonna be staying for the whole morning.
Greensboro has a nice little store, Barton has a little snack bar, which is outside of it.
Do they need to rent porta puffs?
Those Chinese boys are important. I don't know what the septic capacity is of the Little Newark elementary school, you may find out. Connie, Connie, you're cracking me up.
Okay, and then, uh, next, our next meeting is August ninth, here in the library at six thirty. The next SU meeting is August fifteenth, at MVU lighter, library, at, uh, six thirty. Awful. Uh, I have on here anticipated executive session, but I don't believe we need it.
I haven't seen anything here.
I think they just generically put that in.
I believe they do.
So, I'm looking for a motion to.
Hold it, Chris. I, I'd like to say that, I'd like this setup, if we could have the same setup next time. You can see everybody pretty good, and the backs aren't to people, i- if we could put that down, Pat.
We'll do it, this, this time.
Yep, this was Pat's idea, it was a great idea, 'cause I, I do very much like being able to look this way. And we actually have public today, so, it's great. It was a good time to try it out.
We tried to get more public.
Yeah, we, we spread the word.
So, is there some way, I, I'm not a Facebook person, but is there some way to get it on Facebook? And then if people like it, then it goes to someone else's Facebook as well, and all of that?
Yeah, you can, we can share it.
So, I, I was just saying to Chris, that what I, um. I'd, I'd like for us to be a little, like, sticker on the Newark media announcement on the sign. Um, so that people driving through town can see it.
Yep.
You know, right.
The town sign.
Town sign.
We're over here.
I'm sorry.
We get to Wendy. We get a lot.
That would be great, um, so that's, you know, constant information out there.
Yeah.
The town website, maybe, um.
The town website, uh, had tried to advertise this meeting as a push to try to get community involvement.
I saw it.
Uh, but yeah, so tried to do the Newark meeting as well, and tried to get people a little more upset or involved, or whatever it takes to get them there.
Good.
Julie?
Yes.
Do you know anyone in Swanton Village who might be able to put that on the new electronic sign of the village?
I can call, I re- I met with Reg, uh, hello, the village manager this week, so I can call over there and see who, you know, I'm new. So I don't know who the person is. I do live in Swanton, you'd think I'd know, but I've never had to, I'll ask and see.
I mean, if Highgate puts it on theirs, then you has a lot of traffic through Swanton.
Yep.
See, um, Pat seesaw's still working, um, we've got some messages through that, can we get it on? Seesaw, can we get it through there?
Um.
I, I got a message today, I thought it came today.
Not effectively right, not in July effectively.
Okay.
Our best thing is the, uh, Facebook page.
Okay.
Which we can do.
We, I.
We could do, and depend, it's your call. We have a, a school messenger that goes out phone calls, emails.
Oh, yeah.
Um. You could, if you, if, if the board was interested, they could either craft a paragraph. Again, when you're doing that, shorter is better.
Yep.
Um, to be succinct, but, um, that way you're gonna get every single parent in the school. And that could go out whenever, um, there might be some wisdom into going out tomorrow, uh, to plan, for people to plan. If they're taking time off from work, the more time they have, the better. Um, typically, a couple of sentences is really what you're looking to do. We don't, we don't overuse that, so therefore, when they get it, they know it's something important. Uh, that would be the most absolute effective way to get it to everybody.
We get every message three times, my phone, my wife's phone, my house phone, and that's okay.
Yeah. Well, that's why we try not to use it.
You're gonna hit a lot of people if you do that, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess what I would look for is maybe a volunteer from our board to craft a paragraph for Pat.
I'm already on it.
I, I figured, but I was making a mistake. So, if Lisa would be willing to gra- draft a paragraph, that, um, now, should we send it out tomorrow, or should we send it out?
Last chance.
Do it tomorrow.
I'd say tomorrow, so people can ask for time off from work.
Alright, all for it.
If that can be done.
There, there's no way to do it tomorrow, and then run another one on Monday, just a reminder?
And Tuesday, oh, with, uh, with the all-school announcement, all alert?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it done Friday and Monday myself, but.
I know, I, I, I don't know how many times you wanna do it, or, you know, you know, and I, I think you need to get it out as much as possible, but.
I thi- I think Franklin would appreciate that as well.
Yeah.
Sheldon would appreciate that.
I think any information about a bus might be a good thing to have on that. Um, that might, it might differentiate the message a little bit from Friday to Monday also, but maybe that's part of Monday's message, is that reminder about the meeting, and there was a bus, or, I don't know.
So tomorrow, just the announcement, or the date and time, Monday, if you're interested in going, by Monday, we should know if there is a bus available.
I'm emailing Bob right now for the bus, soon as I find out, I will let you know.
Okay.
And I'm emailing Reg Bell.
Yeah. I, I may, I may start the message with identifying myself, that says I'm acting on behalf of, of Highgate School Board.
Cause there's also, at the SU level, that announcement that could go out too, right? To all, all.
All, all schools, all schools have the capacity.
I've gotten them from when, and just assume that he sends it all, that, that all at once.
Well, that, and that's something Julie and I can talk about, if that is a SU school messenger, or is it an in-village wall town? This is, the irony is a little interesting.
Yeah, I think that if I were to do that, I would wanna speak to each board chair.
Yeah.
Um, because it would be reaching more than Highgate's families.
Yeah. Alright, well, given the time.
Is this gonna go well? Your thing gonna go well for next one?
I'm not sure, I think it might, I can confirm that, so I have, um, Paul's station reach out to someone on the school board here and let them know about that.
Should they, reach out to Chris?
Talking about courier?
What's that?
Talking about courier?
No, I talk about this one here, yeah.
I believe it was, uh, three days was the deal that we made, that our, it would be posted via YouTube, our meeting, geez, I can't talk to you. Our meetings via YouTube would be posted within three days. Uh, now, I don't know if that's business days or actual days, but.
Station's not open on Saturday and Sunday, so, um, I'm bringing this back to them tomorrow morning. So that's when they will have it, and how long.
So it'll probably be like Tuesday, Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
Not like one.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, if, uh, nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I can do that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, alright.
All those opposed? Uh, motion, uh, we are adjourned at eight twelve.